Welcome to the Trinity County Board of Supervisors, March 19th, December 20th. Supervisor Groves, will you lead us in the further discussion?
Good morning. I'm delighted to sit at the podium in the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever new and just as.
Thank you. And before we start public comment, I just want to have C.A.O. Coons clarify something since our last meeting there was a lot of confusion on the herbicide issue.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There has been some confusion in the county position regarding spraying on county property, county roads. Trinity County has a resolution that for it is all spraying on county property, county roads, and we have no intention of revising that, so we're still going to go ahead and still enforce that. There is a meeting tomorrow night, not set, not at the...
Thursday.
That's right, it's Tuesday, so Thursday night, I'm sorry, I think I corrected. Regarding Caltrans intentions on spraying within their right of ways in Trinity County. We are hosting it, but we are not in conjunction with them. We're just going to updo what the public's doing and just receive the information to see what their plans are, so we can possibly meet later with our weed commission to determine the best route regarding spraying in Trinity County.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. This time is for information to the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must be contained to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name to the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule of matter on subsequent board agenda. All right. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bob Morris, Vice President of SAFE Alternatives for Forest and Environment, forty-year member of SAFE, also Vice Chair of the Trinity County Weeds Management Area. Been there for a decade and a half or so. I guess I just have some concerns about this upcoming meeting. I rewatched for the third time this morning last Friday's board meeting where Mr. Tippett suggested a format for this meeting that would mimic a previous meeting we had regarding herbicide use on the runways at the airport that had a very successful conclusion. And it's hard to know how this meeting's going to be set up. There's been no agenda put out. It's allegedly sponsored by the Weeds Management Area. None of us have been consulted about the meeting. There's no agenda, which has never happened for a meeting, ever. Angela's been the chair for quite a while. I'm the Vice Chair, but I'm understanding that the Act Commissioner's chairing the meeting. It's in this room. I don't understand how it's going to be set up, that it can be a Weeds Management Area meeting. I guess it's a presentation orchestrated by the Act Commissioner of Caltrans, folks who may or may not accept public input at some point during the meeting. It's just a real odd setup. I fear that it's not going to produce the results that we're hoping for, which was supposed to be, like I said, structured like the previous meeting. It doesn't appear to be going that method at all. You had requested the end of that meeting, that after subsequent to that meeting, there'd be another public meeting for public input. I don't know. That may or may not happen. It was supposed to be well-advertised. I've seen zero advertising, other than being a member of the committee. I've gotten a notice of the meeting. I assume it'll be in the newspaper tomorrow, so that's one day's notice for Thursday's meeting. So I just have some concerns that it may not produce the results that you talked to me about before and convey that to you. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Adam Jaeger, and I'm the General Manager of the Ruthless Community Service Districts. I just wanted to take this opportunity to come over. I just started March 1st and introduced myself to you. Me and Sheriff Saxon today, and the C.H.B. Commander, to talk about enforcement down Southern Trinity for the summer, and so, thank you.
Good morning. Adrian Kiesme of Haverford. I would just like to make a few comments on the potential future agenda item. It would be a letter of support for the proposition, or Senate Bill 67. It's a state temporary license extension bill that is sponsored by Mark McGuire. It hasn't yet had a Senate hearing, or appropriations hearing, and so I'd request that the Board of Supervisors support this action and also to write a letter to, there's a number of different people, Governor McGuire, and also Portantino, Assemblyman Portantino, his name or address I unfortunately don't have, but he's one of the sponsors of the bill, and he could really help us get through this tight patch here. And in those, in that same light, you know, the same thing's happening on the smaller scale here in the county, is we're losing licenses, probably around a, you know, a dozen or so a week, because they're falling out of this, the county temporary before they've been assigned their state license. So would it be possible to do like an emergency-type ordinance that is similar to 67, that extends existing temporaries, that allows them the patchwork time to get their state license, which allows them the time for the county to complete their process? And eventually, with some sort of sunset date, probably middle of summer or something like that, or whenever the program is more intention, more up and running and functional, it's just a patchwork, and it doesn't really change anything. It doesn't allow new applications and so on and so forth. And it's a pretty serious issue, and I don't know what we'll do otherwise. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Morning, Board. Justin Hawkins from Haverford. I guess I'm up here, I'd like to maybe not have so much of an agenda item looked at for the future, but perhaps the Board could talk to the Planning Department Director and ask him to maybe have a meeting with the license holders, so they can explain the SEQA process that's now ongoing. Just so I'm clear, I don't mean explain SEQA, explain our process that we're doing here. Because I've looked at it, and a number of the elements of the process that's now ongoing actually don't look like SEQA as I know it, according to statute or the SEQA guidelines. And to give you a couple of examples, just, you know, this is maybe not relevant to the statutes of SEQA, but I thought we were affirmed that there's statutory exemption going on right now. I don't know how the county can decide to go ahead and issue categorical exemptions in the newspaper for farms right now, not with the E.I.R. pending, doesn't make any sense to me. They're also issuing what are called provisional licenses. These were both noticed in the newspaper this week. And I've spoken with probably about a dozen of the people that I know on this list, and none of them knew this was going on. Supposedly letters are being sent to neighbors within 300 feet of all the property lines, and they haven't even had a chance to approach their neighbors. I bet you there's farmers right now that don't even realize that this is going on Some other issues I noticed, they're splitting up the A.P.M.s when there's joint A.P.M.s on the license, and they're analyzing them separately. This is in the methodologies that are on the website. That separating the A.P.M.s under SEQA is not allowed. SEQA is a project-wide analysis over multiple A.P.M.s, very common. Our licenses are per parcel, in our organs, that's multiple A.P.M.s. There, my friend's license, number 43, was in both categories for provisional and a categorical exemption on the noticing in the paper. They split his license up. One A.P.M.'s in one category, the other A.P.M.'s in the other category. If there is an appeal on one of those through the public noticing process, and that A.P.M.'s withheld from his license, well now he just lost half the license, or it's not going to match a state license either. That's actually not allowable. I wanted to mention one more thing, too. The filing of the categorical exemptions doesn't make sense to me, because official law life currently is not finalizing LSAs in our, in our county, not for about a year. That's because our E.I.R. is not done here. They're waiting to file their categorical exemptions for the LSAs in our county until our E.I.R. is done. Official law life is an expert agency of SEQA, so I don't know if they think it's not appropriate. I don't know how our county's doing it. There's a lot more I'd like to talk about, I don't want to suck up all the oxygen, but could you do me a favor and just ask the Director of the Department head updates, how many appeals have already been filed with the Planning Department regarding the SEQA notices for cannabis in the paper? Thank you. Both categories, please, provisional and categorical. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. John Brown from Junction City. And in the same vein as the last two speakers, we've got yet another commercial cannabis permitting emergency on our hands here, both locally and at the state level. Of the three state licensing agencies, Calcan, which deals with cultivation, is crumbling with, from within right now. They are choking miserably on reviewing annual and provisional applications in a timely manner prior to temporaries expiring. And we really do need a letter of support for our Senate Bill 67 from the county. The L.A. County Congressman, I forget his name, Adrian said it, Portantino, really needs encouragement to help get this through appropriations. McGuire did a great job of getting an emergency bill together and getting it through business and professions, but now it really needs some extra support. The C.A., Calcan has recently reached out to our County Planning Department and quote, started to notify them as temporaries are expiring, and seeing as they have local authorization prior to their expiring, but their own list from the state agency is very inaccurate. We've already had many state temporaries expire in Trinity County, and the, their online list of licenses that are valid, suspended, under review, whatever, is very inaccurate right now. Calcan is not keeping up even with updating their list. I'm aware of many cultivators that have product sitting at distributors, waiting certificate of quality assurance from, from a lab, that their state licenses have, state temporaries have expired for weeks now, in some cases, yet online it still shows them as active. So Calcan cannot be trusted right now to hold up their end of this bargain. And our local county permitting department is really wrestling with this new SEQA era that we're in, and they're going to run into real problems trying to get these permits out in a timely fashion for the spring push that the farmers must be affected in. So I also encourage you to come up with something like a declaration of an emergency that would mirror Senate Bill 67, and just extend or continue to honor existing county licenses from 2018 until our E.I.R. is finished in July. It's just a couple of months away. Thank you.
Robert Harvey, Weaverville. Last week, there was a Planning Commission meeting, which a part of it was possible grading ordinance or moratorium. I don't remember seeing any of you folks there. It was a public meeting, and it was sort of lightly attended. I think the Planning Department, I'm not sure what it is anymore, came up with a very good moratorium. I have not read it before the meeting. I had looked at Humboldt's grading ordinances, and they had a nice little one-page application, which was very clear for very small grading projects. I think progress is being made here. I hope you guys come up with something to fix the grading problem in the county. Thank you.
Hello, Board. Gerald Davis from Junction City. I want to speak on two quick matters. I know this story's getting old, but it's been since October, since I paid my fees for my cannabis permit, still don't have it. Been going through these hurdles, and this last one is a massive hurdle to go through an exemption program when we've already been exempted. Another thing I wanted to comment on was that, well, through this exemption program, all my neighbors are going to get notified, right? Meanwhile, Caltrans gets to go right through my property. My property has an easement through California State 299 goes right through it. Where's my notice that they're going to spray? I want 10 days to react to. Is that going to happen? Because I'm simply growing a cannabis plant, it has stringent guidelines, I have to get lab. Is this guy going to spray roundup on my farm? No problem? That's pretty strange. So what I'm asking for is something, something, anything that you guys could actually do. Now, I know you say your hands are tied on this, it's up to Caltrans, Dr. Tippett said, whatever happens, happens, it sounds like, but we'll try, but they're going to do it anyway. That's what I heard. Is there any way to, to do something about this? Like, literally, the, I mean, if you, I don't even need 10 days, I need one hour to find a biologist to shut that down. It'd be easy. I don't need the whole 10 days. So that's what I'm talking about here. I really glean here, I've been here so many times, aside from getting on my knees begging. I know it's an old story, but still, I'm really hoping to get my cannabis permit that I paid for. I have, I'm an employer, actually, I'm just a wannabe employer at this point in time. I have families with kids that need their jobs back. I have a job. I need my job back. I talked for this full-time, for three years I've stood here, coming out into the mic, but I'm in the shade. It's pretty shady, this scenario that I'm in. So I'm just hoping for some type of action and to bring the, the Caltrans initiated scenario that is happening right now, it's just, it's amazing to me. So can we work a little harder here? And once again, begging for the Planning Commission to do exactly what they say, because every communication with me has happened to be completely inaccurate. Nothing has been followed up. I haven't got any emails that were promised, no phone calls at times, meetings I went there to meet, nobody was there to meet. They said, "Come back next day," over and over and over. I've been told at least three times by Leslie that they, she was giving me my permit. Still no permit. It's been months. Thank you for here.
Okay, there's a couple of things we can address real quickly. C.A.O. Coons, maybe you could follow up with Mr. Davis about his license issue in the Planning Department. Our first speaker, Mr. Morris, he's correct. The format for Thursday is not exactly what the Board directed. We tried to remedy that in the last couple of days, C.A.O. and I. And it's unfortunate, we think that the plan the Board had laid out would be a little bit more productive, but I think there was some urgency to accomplish something as the clock is ticking on a few levels. So the hope is, Mr. C.A.O. Coons had pointed out earlier, that the, I mean, following that would happen, so. You'll follow up on that, C.A.O.? Okay. So, and then we anticipate a letter of support for Prop 67, not Prop 67, but SB 67, I think it was, and so we'll look at, there was just not enough time for this agenda. And it was also, my understanding, staff was going to do kind of an educational workshop on some of this processing of the licenses. I think, things seem to be ahead of schedule a little bit, so I don't know that that happened. So I think I've covered it all from what I was hearing from the public. All right, moving on to consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters under the act of upon the board by one rule call motion. A member of the board's staffer publicly requests an item be pulled and considered separately. Board members. Supervisor, Chair. Superior. Supervisor, Grant. Okay. And with that, I would entertain a motion. Oops, sorry, public. Anyone wishing to pull an item?
Yeah, 1.10 and 1.15.
Thank you. Anybody else? Shelley, do you have an item to pull?
1.21.
Anyone else?
1.24.
All righty. With that.
Motion to approve as presented, consent agenda.
Thank you.
One second.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Davis?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris? Yes. All right. Item 1.10, if you just fully remember the public, adopted resolution consolidating special districts as school district, district elections and statewide general elections, potential savings in election costs for those special districts and school districts going to the ballot. All right.
Morning. McGuire, Haverford. I'm going to compliment whoever's responsible, I believe it's the registrar, for getting this right this time. This is what is supposed to be done every odd year. It was, it's an extensive amount of work, but it's necessary. This is also why the appeal is going forward on this case, because these things were discovered in the trial, but nothing was found on it. I'm talking about the actual training and the actual signing of the certificates of participation in the consolidation, and I would encourage you guys to vote for him.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All right. I would like to make a motion to approve as presented. Great.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, item 1.4.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone. Item 1.14.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse on this alcohol.
All right. Item 1.14, final objections to the issuance of a daily alcoholic beverage license to eat plant despite this and the Rocky Mountain Alf Foundation to serve alcoholic beverages and dinner to be held at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Weaverville, California on April 13, 2019, no fiscal impact. Questions for the Board? Members of the public? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Second motion.
We're so sorry.
I said, "Thank you."
Wait, wait. Okay, fine. As presented, I couldn't get the number fast enough. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, seeing none, passes. All right. Item 1.15, adopted resolution which removes the district attorney's capital asset inventory listing asset ID 12589 block 40, California semi-auto pistol, serial CF G250 and asset ID 12590 block 40, Cal semi-auto pistol serial number CE S937, no fiscal impact. This is a trade for ammunition.
Okay, boy, that's a lot of ammunition for the guns going very cheaply. So I'm just curious as to how much the guns are actually going for, and is the ammunition just going to be supplied for the one investigator, or is it going to be going into the general sheriffs, sheriffs as well?
Okay, do we have the Department? DA, DA? Oh, there she is.
Basically, we don't use these firearms. When I came on board, I wanted to know why we had these, and so they're just being traded across the board for the ammunition as needed, just for the district attorney's office, because we still have one firearm left.
Okay.
And it'll be appraised at the time of the trade.
Questions for board members?
So the ammunition, you just have a credit at the place?
At the pawn shop.
At the pawn shop.
That was tough for you to say.
Got it out.
Well, it's the old best, yeah.
It's, yeah, but it's, it's not necessarily just ammunition, it's a credit there, correct?
Yes.
So it could go to, if in the future needed another weapon, you could use that credit?
I think we'd have to ask if we could purchase another weapon.
But, no, but I mean with them, you would have, you just have a credit there.
Right. And as, as needed, we would purchase the ammunition.
Thank you. Any other questions for board members? Public, any questions on that? No. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board and entertain a motion.
You've got a motion to approve, 1.15 as presented.
All right, thank you. Tina, please.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Davis?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Davis?
Yes, thank you. Okay, item 1.21, under Human Resources, approve the allocation of positions listing effective March 19, 2019, no fiscal impact.
Shelley Nelson, HR Director. So here's my hope of this item. We had one additional change that I had received after the item was published, I wanted to see if I could include that. So in addition to any changes that are reflected in the staff report, under the Department of Behavioral Health, there's a category, it's a flexibly staffed category of account clerk through accountant two. What we'd like to do is add the option of an accountant three, and under accountant two, it says maximum of one, we just wanted to remove that, which would allow more flexibility for positions that are needed, promotion would be needed.
Or members, questions? No, all right. Members of the public, any questions on that?
Yes, Supervisor, once again, John Brown from Junction City, and I just want to encourage Human Resources to put a couple more dollars an hour into these cannabis department positions. It doesn't make sense for us to continually offer about the going rate that the other poor Northern California counties would offer for what is normally these planning positions, but these are very high-stress positions. These people are really putting their, their lives into this. It's incredibly stressful, and it's important that we attract and retain talent. And, you know, we've got a history of getting people trained up and then losing them, oftentimes to another job that pays like $1 more an hour, so.
It's a lot of different items I'm trying to.
But generally speaking, to Human Resources and the allocation of these positions and the funding, let's give these people somebody. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none, all in favor?
I'll move to accept 1.21 with the amended changes stated by.
Take your second?
Second.
Thank you both. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, thank you. Alright. Item 1.22, adopted resolution. Nope. Thank you, 1.24, approve an agreement with Miller Excavation to provide transportation and destruction of contraband. Thirty thousand from the cannabis eradication program, notice. Good morning, Joe. Okay. Edward, did you have a question? Thank you, Tina.
Okay, this may get a little strange. Oh, Edward Harvey, Weaverville. Well, it's sort of perfect that the one came up about trading guns in for ammunition. The county also confiscates lots of weapons from felons and other situations. And these guns are traded in for ammunition. I know that seems not to have anything to do with cannabis. But certainly in the newspaper, like the last one, there's these lists of large things that are confiscated. Cash is one of them. Property-like vehicles and stuff like that. In some ways, I wondered if you confi-- what is this contraband that's being destroyed? My guess is it's things that are illegal. But marijuana is legal. So, how come you don't sell the marijuana like you do the confiscated weapons? It's a source of income, it could be a terrific source of income. And it's a little tongue-in-cheek, but it's a little not tongue-in-cheek. You know, you wouldn't go burn that cash that you confiscate. Now, there's a little bit of a problem if, if the beds are mixed up in this confiscation because they say, "Oh, it's stuff you want to destroy." But anyway, it's something to think about. Eventually, you could be the rich county you think you are.
Any questions from the board? Is there any answer to this question? I see something from Supervisor Chandler.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Yes, I would thank you, Joe, for sitting with us. Yes, I would, Supervisor Finley.
Make a motion to approve 1.24 as presented. Taking Edward's comments into consideration.
Thank you. All second. Wait, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so moved, thank you, Joe. Alright, I think we have gotten through that. Moving out to reports and amendments, item 2.1. Reports from Department of.
Morning. Rick Tippett, Director of Transportation. Just wanted to announce that the jail beds were opened up last week. And I was very happy, I had great concern that with the bed uncertainties that we've had from fires and general contractor, laborers and carpenters, I was concerned about where the bed would end up. We had the material bid, which is easy to quantify and say, "This is what it is." And our estimate was eighteen point four million dollars. But then sometimes when you have uneven bed situations like this, there is a concern that you would end up with higher bids, especially if you had a low-numbered bid. But we had three bids that extended and the low bid was right on the amount that we had estimated. So, that, due to escalation of costs, we were supposed to be out to construction last year, but we did held up a year and some other escalations. We still find we're a little short on, we wanted to also bump up contingency. So, we find we're still about two million dollars over budget right now, but we're within striking range. So, we're gonna be putting together the award to get it to go to VSCC and get them to allocate or authorize us to award. And when that comes back, we'll have. But I just wanted to let you know, we did have a successful bid. I rarely ever have it literally right on the engineer's estimate, so it will mislead the architect's estimate. We did have three bids and the bid range was less than five percent on all bidders. And that shows that you have a very, what I call, tight set of plans, which means it's unlikely that you can have a lot of playing plans. It's going to be so, what you expect. So, we might have some luck and savings on contingency, but contingency is exactly that. It's time for the unknown, so you always set aside the beginning. We've had some action in the matter, first and second. You did discuss the weed meeting that's coming up, so I'll go through that here. I did want to mention again that we did have storm damage on Sky Ranch Road and Hyam Palm Road that we discussed at meeting back on Friday two weeks ago. Hyam Palm Road damage is a concern because of the fact that if it does go, slips out all the way, it would lock out the area of Hyam Palm. But fortunately, going back, we found the drill locks for that area. The part that's still in use. Comparable soil or, or bid soil, and so we don't expect any problems. So, things are looking good. There was some questions about staff meeting to discuss, hiring staff meeting to discuss the new process. And Council Cole and staff met with all, quite a few of the consultants. Matter of fact, some of them were here on Friday to discuss the program. So, yes, we are, we are trying to roll it out and right now, we're trying to get the consultants that are working with it to understand it so they can explain it to the clients. But we're trying to get the word out about what's going on. And then finally, I promised you, this was the award that I received in Duell Means earlier this year for a small, small, nationwide, small design build project of the year. And I showed you, I bring it in, I found it in the slow boat, or I should say, slow railcar from the old means got here the other day. And I got it, but this was the award that the department out for the six bridges, or five bridges project, what I take is WA a year and a half ago.
Great. Congratulations to you and your staff. And Rick, I didn't mean to leave you out when I mentioned earlier about Caltrans meeting. I also. But I did want to thank you. You did your best to facilitate board direction throughout the last week, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick, I've got some questions. So, there was a question, I don't know if you've heard from the audience, how many appeals have been filed on this?
No appeals, I know, but I haven't talked to most of them today. We did do our first notice last week in paper. And we haven't had, received any, any of that, but it's open for appeal five, for ten business days, which is a period of one next Wednesday.
The, I know we have a grading ordinance that's going to come to us at some point. But back in December, I requested that this board set priorities for the planning department before we move forward on anything. And before I have an interest in voting into the grading ordinance, and that's just me, I want to set those priorities for the future. The weed meeting Thursday, as in noxious weeds? So, how is, are you involved in getting the publicity out?
No, this is a.
This is all the.
Yeah, the county, the county has the position of being, has an application of herbicides. And so, it's, Caltrans is the one that wants to make this application.
I just want to know who's facilitating, just the department, you're not part of this.
Well, yeah, but Dave Mitch, Dave Mitch should bring the form.
Alright.
Caltrans is the one that's odd.
Those are my questions, thank you. Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay. First to her.
Good morning. I just wanted to announce that we did recruit, made an offer for the new position that we have in Southern District of Card next week. We were coming into our heavy time period, so I'm really excited that we'll have additional personnel on board for that. Really hoping that Canvas changed their timing, because last year, they timed it at the same time as property tax. And so, that made last year for really fun property tax time, because Canvas will also do, since we provide those permit fees. So, I'm hoping that they change that. Also, we're hoping that with this new team member on board, that we'll have them, they've worked for us before, and so they're somewhat familiar. And so, I'm hoping that we'll have them trained and be available to change, to change the office hours, to increase the timing. So, I'm hoping that that'll happen over the next couple months. And then, also, we have, I wanted to make you aware that this new conversion process that we're moving aboard with the property tax system, so I'm happy to say that they're very diligent. I'm pleased with where the progress is working and they're very easy to work with, so I'm happy about that. And then also, last thing would be that I want to make you aware that we work with Airbnb and they will be starting the collections for the online process as of this month. And so, hopefully, I'll have more information to come back and report to you on how that's going and what kind of differences. If that's making.
Okay. Great, any other? CEO Coons?
I think the head chair, members of the board. I was asked, I helped out immediately regarding the food bank to find funding to assist them through, from April to June. And what we've done is working with the finance staff, we've located up to seven thousand dollars that we can assist the food bank. And what it'll be coming from is actually our board travel budget. Each year, we assign the travel budget to the board and we've been able to have savings in there. And we'll be using those funds to assist the food bank up to seven thousand. We gotta go talk to them and see what their actual need is, because Supervisor Brown did donate five thousand dollars, so it may be as little as two thousand, so I still need to clarify with them, but we found up to seven thousand for them.
Right, and I assume you and you'll work with them on the first five moving forward?
Yes, we're still working on that. Want to report?
Alright. Report from board members, Supervisor Brown, I'll start with you.
No out-of-county travel, nothing to report.
Supervisor Finn?
PSA two yesterday. Why would happen with PSA two?
No, just glad you were there.
Oh, yeah, I sufficiently got the, and deservedly so. PSA two, out-of-county travel. I also absolutely want to thank for last Thursday, Thursday's meeting, the meeting in Hyam Palm before the fire, before the special board meeting regarding the Hyam Palm Road. It was well-attended by the public. I got a lot of feedback from the public that it was very well-accepted. They were very happy with the attention, they were very happy with the information. And it's the first time that the county has actually reached out in such a successful way. Departments that were included were Trinity County OES, which gave very good presentation on what was going on. Trinity County Health and Human Services had three, two or three people there that were reaching out and trying to anticipate what Hyam Palm needed. Department of Transportation, I only got to beat Rick up a little bit, but the audience was very nice to him. Administration was represented by CEO Coons, who was very eloquent and stated the county's position specifically. And the Board of Supervisors was represented. I want to thank staff and thank the county employees for doing what they're doing for Hyam Palm and the road itself. Thank you. And for your professionalism, just amazing.
Supervisor Grove?
No, out-of-county travel. But I do want to, just, I see some of the audience signing, signing, that your letter was passed and so we'll get a copy of your letter for your support. And if you don't get it, Tina, Tina's the person to call.
Thank you.
So, you don't have to hang around.
You're welcome.
Unless, unless you're bored.
Supervisor Chandler?
Yes. On the 12th, the local LCP, and there's a couple openings that we're looking for people that have children enrolled in the school to participate. On the 12th also was my first introduction to the disaster council. And it was eye-opening and I appreciate all the people that put so much time and effort into trying to think outside the box for future problems in our county. On the 13th, RCRC in Sacramento. And on the 14th, NorCal EMS in Redding.
Alright. No out-of-county travel. I do want to, there's been a lot going on for a lot of our first responders on all levels, whether it's fire department, sheriff department, everyone in between ambulance, the last couple weeks. So, I just, they've had a lot on their hands and I just want to thank everybody for all your work out there. It's been an interesting couple, few weeks, so thank you, everyone, helping our citizens out there, so. Other than that, we'll move on to report of ad hoc committees. Commercial cannabis ordinance amendments. As we mentioned last time, we are in a holding pattern for a couple more weeks. Supervisor Grove, anything you'd like to add? Okay. Federal lands legislation, I think we had a report last time. We're working with the collaborative on that. And can you like to add?
No, we're waiting for the collaborative contact list.
And retail cannabis ordinance ad hoc.
Thought I saw someone that was going to report out, but he stepped out. So, we, we've continued to have our nucleus meetings and we have come up with a template, stakeholder meetings, many throughout the entire process. Two meetings thus far that we have had that we're keeping track of the time, just for our own knowledge. We're going to have two public workshops, or actually, three. The first one will be on April 20th at the Trinity County Fairgrounds. The agenda will be posted hopefully in the next couple weeks, so people have plenty of time to see what was going on. The staff drafts ordinance will then be sent to the different stakeholders groups and meetings as we collect information from different stakeholders. Then we'll work on the final draft, the planning commission hearings, the planning commission first hearing and second hearing, incorporate the edits made by the commissioners, the BOs meetings for the first reading, second meeting, and then hopefully be enacted. So, right now, that is a template that is missing the dates because we're trying to have the goals set and have something to aim for. So, hopefully, after this first or twenty, we'll be able to fill in those other dates.
Alright. Thank you. Supervisor Finley, I meant to say something during your report that we understand that you had a long way home after your Hyam Palm meeting, so.
Yes.
Glad you're still here.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, us know that you're right.
No.
It's slippery sliding now.
Okay, it's a little better. Alright, we'll take a five-minute break before we move into county matters. Alright, moving on to county matters. These items include non-tin or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by departments and members of the board, staff, the public, and requested items to be heard on board. Board members, any? Okay. Moving on to item 3.1, approve a budget adjustment for the county audit department, department 1101, decreasing services and supplies by $225, and approve a budget adjustment for the general fund contingency department, number 9901, decreasing incorporation of contingency by $225. Increase in general fund appropriations of $225. Good morning, Mike.
My chair, my board, my board members up. Every year we have a lot of costs, and this year the allocation of applications based, a lot of it's based on the cash balance of the fund. The general fund had a higher allocation, because they actually had cash in general fund this year, because of the payoff cost. And because of that, they took our costs and that amount of that we need an additional $25, so that's going to continue.
Questions on the board? Members of the public? Alright, bringing that to the board. Anybody entertain a motion?
Motion to approve that again? Got a second?
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, so moved. Thank you, Mike. Moving on to item 3.2, receive a mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2018, 2019. CAO, this...
Head chair, members of the board. I'm pleased to provide you with our major review of 1819, you should all have got one of these, 1819 budget adopt, which was adopted on September 18th, 2018, in the amount of I'd also like to thank all the department heads and their staff, and my staff, Susie, for the hard work in preparing this and keeping this on budget. I'm pleased to announce that all our expenses and revenues are in line as of the report. We do have a few requests that we're asking for to consider as part of the major review. We've found some, or we have money that we'd like to allocate to a few departments to assist them in some unforeseen expenses. One is, we're recommending $23,630 from realignment for environmental health, $13,635 in animal control, $10,000. We're also asking $101,563 from general fund contingency to provide sheriff's office with relief of their overtime. They expended $93,363.70 during the car fire. It's all reimbursable, but as we know, it comes in slow, so we'd like to make their overtime account right, when the funds come in, we'll reimburse our general fund. We also talked to the sheriff, we found that we need some safety equipment in our jail, so we're asking to use $7,200 to purchase seven staff vests. We don't have all the vests for each officer, I'm sorry, six vests. We don't have enough vests for each officer on the shift right now, so we're asking that we can use $7,200 to purchase vests for our correctional staff. We also are asking to reimburse the fair association $15,000. Back in 2009, 10, the fair association helped the county out during its hardship, and to produce payment of $15,000, sorry, $10,000 of their normal $25,000 allotment. So we're asking that we can reimburse them from that time period. Finally, the assessors currently working to upgrade their property tax management software to become fully automated, providing megabyte systems. The system includes modulars for the assessor, auditor, and tax collector. They applied for and rewarded $750,000 in funding. There is a two-to-one match, which we put the money aside, I believe during our budget time, so that's, we're not asking for any additional funds for that, but I just don't know if those funds came through. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding major budgets.
I just have a quick question. I'm not sure if I heard you correctly, but $101,563 is coming out of contingency? Is that dedicated correctly?
Susie?
It's actually not coming out of contingency. We, when we balance our budget during budget development, we use cash carryover.
I got it.
And cash carryover came in a little bit higher than we budgeted for, so we would like to use some of that to fund these additional costs.
That's right. Thank you for that quick question.
Supervisor Chadwick? Yes. Earlier, Terry from Treasure, during your report, she asked, and I think we have a response, but I don't, I don't know if it'd be appropriate now for you to deal with it, because the taxes were coming into the high priority, and the cannabis fees as well, and my understanding was the cannabis fees were going to roll over into a annual, when they were anniversary date, and I was hoping that you could address that. And the second item would be tied into the annual fees for those that are waiting on the state, if there's some way that we could consider that as a budget item going forward, the ones that are in limbo, they're gonna fall out because of the environmental situation with the sequel between the counties and the state. So I don't know if now is appropriate, if this budget is going forward, so.
Yeah, I can answer that personally. We are working on, and we are doing the annual renewals, and it's coming up this year, that we switched from everybody to do it one time, so that is, that is in the working process, and should be falling into place this year, the next year definitely, each person, each license will be. The second part, yeah, will be something we can discuss.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, any other questions from the board? No? Members of the public? No? Alright, I'll bring it back to the board.
Would you like a motion to receive?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion on that in three... To receive the mid, the outer mid-year budget review as presented with answering questions that Supervisor Chadwick brought up, ask you'll meet with CAO, and this is for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
And authorizing the CAO and the auditor to approve budget adjustments for the...
Okay, I'd also like to add CAO in the honor to do approve budget adjustments for...
The items outlined in the mid-year memo?
Yeah, the items outlined in the mid-year memo, okay. I have my budget book up, and I don't have the staff reporting, I'm really thankful for staff reporting, so that's my, that's my motion, and I'm sticking to it.
Okay, do I have a second to that?
A second.
Alright, evidence?
I have some comments.
Okay.
I'm actually kind of shocked here that nobody came and asked questions about our cannabis department. We hear all the time how we keep things closed and secret and hidden from the public, and this was the opportunity to ask specific questions. The people that are asking those questions are not in the room today, I guess. So it disappoints me that people don't understand the process, and that's why I'll ask...
Alright, thank you Supervisor.
I would like to make one comment also. I want to thank the layout, and I should have mentioned this earlier, my, on the way that is presented to the supervisors and the way the signature, I know Tina had a lot to do with it, and Susie, you probably do too, but I really appreciate the new format and how clean and easy this is to read, and I know going forward, Dr. Coons, I'm sure deserves a lot of credit, so thank you.
Okay, with that, I will ask all of you, are you in favor to receive this major budget?
Aye.
Alright, anyone opposed? Alright, duly accepted. Thank you both, CAO Coons and Susie. Moving on to item 3.3, approve a revised Trinity County emergency operation plan.
Good morning. I'm Dr. David KJES in Goldinas, and with me is Ed Presti, who's an emergency operations manager. So in front of you, you have revised emergency operations plan. Please note that the last version was dated January of 2013, so we felt it was absolutely appropriate time to review. We definitely have condensed it from a 300-page document to a 103-page document. I really need to commend Ed and his staff, and then Dawson, on really convincing us to a really legible and reader-friendly type of document. It does follow the standard format of information on EOPs from the state, we make sure to follow that format. I do want to mention also that this county emergency operations plan is part of a set of state mandated county emergency plans. The other ones are the Trinity County General Plan, the Trinity County Housing Education Plan, and Trinity County House Justices Area Plan. It definitely covers a multitude of information on how implement, excuse me, how to implement a response to any type of an emergency incident. We work closely with all of our emergency response partners and community members. It outlines different types of emergencies processes, and how to formally declare for any state of emergency. On page two of the introduction, there's just a small paragraph that I'd like to read, because I really felt this was a good summary of what our focus has been since we have the OES under KJES, and it's under the section called whole community plan. It says, "The whole community planning approach is based on the recognition that it takes all aspects of the community to effectively prepare for, protect against, respond to, recover from disasters. This includes all emergency management partners, both traditional and non-traditional, such as volunteer, faith, and community-based organization, private sector, and the public, including survivors of an incident." It's been our goal in running the OES department that we do a broad spectrum of education and outreach. I want to show you an example of a prototype of what we're creating out of our public health emergency preparedness plans. We're working with the high school woodshop department to build some of these, which is basically a pre-prepared information tool for the public. So along with working with our partners in disaster council, we are reviewing all the different things that we can do to inform the community. We're definitely building up our registries for disaster service workers, between community volunteers, as well as our county employees. I'm very proud that our disaster council, I think the last camp I had, we had about 24 to 27 members on our meetings, which, you know, includes life support, hospital, office of education, of course, our county department, the fire district, and PD. So we really, you know, appreciate all of the input, review. I built in a scenario review at our meetings to just talk about, you know, some of the different types of incidents, like, you know, when we have failure communication, what if we had a chemical spill downtown. So to me, I want it to be more of a building, sharing, information sharing, and strategy. So I'm really proud that it's been facilitating a lot of that coordinating, and it's been going very well. Our funding for OES is coming through Homeland Security Grant Program, as well as the Emergency Management Performance Grant. I have had conversations with our county auditor, because we have found that we are in need of emergency contingency funding, because every time we have an incident, there's been some high expenditures that we find ourselves that no department has budgeted for. So it is something that we'll keep working on, so hopefully with your approval, we can, excuse me, work something out. So overall, I'm really, like I said, very proud of this document. It is a working document, it's not final, it's open for edits, but the one big change that we are looking for your approval to, and by your approval, is to change the amount of time to approve any resolutions, proclamations, whereas currently it's 14 days, this would change it to 60 days. As you notice, every, for agenda, we have our item in there, 14 days. So this would change that, which would reduce, you know, the workload, and just checking in with Tina on getting on the agenda. So other than that, Ed's here, I'm here to answer your questions, but I just wanted to thank you, and hope you approve here.
Great, great. More members of questions?
Well, the only question I have on this right here specifically is, is there a planned training on the updates, and do you feel that, that everyone's aware of the plan and has all of the, you know, knowledge and training, so that might be implemented properly?
Yeah, we shared the disaster plan updates with the disaster council going back to October of last year. It was a good amount of time for the review, and it did get a lot of feedback and changes and things, more likely to. So we definitely will review it periodically. We are, it is in here that we do need to review it annually, so I told Ed, we need the calendar back, you know, documents will say that, but then it doesn't get done. So we do need to make sure it's updated, and we're making...
Supervisor Chadwick? Yes, this is probably more directed to Ed. Thank you, Ed, both CSAC and RCRC, there's more and more talk of regional resiliency. I'm just curious to know if the other OES communities, counties surrounding us, if you work on a regional level?
Yes, ma'am, we do. I mean, we attend the actual regional, the inland regional meeting every three months, so we actually have a meeting that we get together, all of the inland region three. So, and then we also work outside of our region as well, so like in the car fire, we actually coordinated with Humboldt as well, because 299 was closed. That was really a very viable option for us to go in that direction instead of the traditional going east. But one of the parts, when I first came on, was to build those relationships, and I was outlining emergency managers into the counties. So that was one of the points of emphasis. That way, they can call me, I can call them, it's a whole mutual, where we just support one another.
Thank you.
Yeah, lady, is this a public document that you put on to the website?
Yes, it will be posted on the website, upon your approval.
I have two quick questions. I think there's only two of us on the board who approved the last one, and in a quick sentence or two, can you just inform the public and the board just how this really comes into being when a disaster strikes? I mean, it pretty much the map off the shelf, if you could just give a scenario...
Sure.
...of how this begins?
Yeah, there's different sections in the plan that addresses the different types of responses, whether it's a county department or a public utilities. And again, it does provide the expectations that all the agencies are... And again, it does provide the expectations that all the agencies are included in this plan, that they have their own continuing, continuing operations plan. And so it does, it's just a complete outline, you know, it covers recovery, protection, mitigation, roles and responsibilities within each of the agencies. It talks about sheltering, the types of training that we're all required to have in, in being in the ICS and the EOC. So it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of information, granted, but it does cover everything that's necessary for us to understand how we would respond to an emergency. It actually even has the templates of the proclamations and resolutions, which I noticed they're, they're a little bit more updated than the ones we're using now. So we're going to be looking at them to see if we need to update the ones we've been using. So, and again, this is basically at the format from the state structure, which I really prefer just to follow. And again, it's just more condensed. The other one was just so huge and this just, like I said, it would be easy just to pick off the shelf and just kind of follow through there. That is the plan.
Great. And I know Ed's been looking at, we've requested the, we don't do it annually, but the board goes through a little bit of a training. And I know OES has just been jammed, so just didn't want that to fall off our radar since we had a lot of...
Right.
Since the last time we've done it. It's been about five or six years too.
And it is a requirement, all board members need to have the ICS training, so we can't provide that to you, like you did last year or a couple years ago. So no problem.
Okay, great. Good job, Jen. Thank you guys both. Any questions from the public?
John R. from Junction City, just one, not really a question, but a comment. I just want to remind the OES staff that it'd be helpful to run a drill occasionally on the Code Red system. It seems like we're really 100% relying on that now to spread information in a timely manner. And, you know, we don't have the reverse 911 going to landlines and things like that. So it'd be really important to run a few drills now and then and make sure everybody knows what it means when it happens and then, you know, check and see if it actually works. That's all, thank you.
Anything else?
Veronica Kelly Alves, Deppa City. I wanted to actually ask about the reverse 911 and I apologize if I have not had a chance to read your entire document, but I will. But I wanted to know the communications, especially during the car fire. I lived in Deppa City and we were packed, ready to go. We never knew when, if we were going to get a call or anything. So I'd love to know how that's being addressed in the new, in the new procedures.
Well, definitely Code Red is activated in our county. Ed is the one that manipulates that to send the messages out. He does advise the code area or just, actually he has a map right now. But as far as 211 goes, you know, that is something that we have been on conference calls with the state because they are providing funding to counties that do not have emergency 211 and that is something that I am pursuing. Again, it's just the emergency 211, it's not the general 211. But we are really hoping we can get that completed and with board approval, you know, hopefully by the end of this year. There's just been some, some delays and I'm sure with all the disasters and the campfire, you know, and other issues, the state's been preoccupied, but we're hoping we can get that followed through because believe it's on the top of the menu there.
Can I piggyback that? I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Oh, shouldn't have left it, just to piggyback that. So are you using social media as well? Because I will tell you that we never got a call and we were right, we're on, right off of Highway 3, down Marshall Ranch Road. And you guys blocked everything onto 299 at one point, but we never got any kind of calls. Facebook was our friend when we had internet, when the power wasn't out. So are you, or do you have contingency plans for that as well?
We have, we have Facebook, we have, of course, our websites. I'm trying to think what else we use. Yeah.
Right. The last time the reverse, the reverse 911 was used was on the 7th of March, I believe, Ed used it to contact High and Palm specific constituents to alert them that there was a meeting regarding the road within eight hours, six hours, and it seemed to be successful. I didn't think it would be, but kudos, it was great.
And I would like to also suggest if people have not registered for Code Red, it's just a matter of phone help? And you have registered?
I have, and I never got one phone call during that.
Okay. We can connect with you maybe after. Ed is the one that does help people and you do have a system to, you know, to reach out. We try to advertise in Trinity Journal. Again, we're going to be providing information in these, you know, we're getting a count of how many we need because it's going to go in every county, district, all businesses, anywhere where there's high traffic, we want the public to see this because it does give us some handy suggestions in how to be prepared, you know, making a list and just all kinds of good stuff. So we'll see what we can do.
Supervisor, what?
Just be curious if there's a way to get any highway signage down river or anywhere in the county too, just so people see it when they're driving by.
What during a disaster you refer to?
Like the code rather than...
Oh, gotcha. Right.
And I don't know if Ed wants to speak to the WEA system. He worked very hard on getting us...
Yes, ma'am, I'll be doing a presentation later on that.
Oh, okay.
But I can just mention it real shortly because just like in May, we should have the emergency 211 set up. That's what we were told by the state last time we talked to them. But I've also, I guess this was the first time it had ever been done for this county. I worked with three FEMA and the state in order to make us an actual IPOS cog, so it's Integrated Public Alert Warning System. So it allows me or any, or anybody else that's trained on it and is approved by FEMA to go in and break into television and radio broadcasts as well. So that's kind of, we want, I want to know, I want to know, we want to know what we need to do that is not getting done. That is the only way this stuff gets done in a better manner. So with someone saying, I am registered for Code Red, why didn't it work? When I leave out of here, name, phone number, I want to make sure that there's not some confusion in the system because the system is not perfect. So I want to make sure everybody is loaded up the way they're supposed to be so that when we send those messages out, they get sent out correctly. So...
And have any messages been sent out on Code Red yet in addition to the High and Palm recent meeting?
During the car delta fire, all the evacuation notices that were sent out, they were all sent via Code Red. And now that we have IPOS integrated into that, it'll even be anyone traveling through on a cell phone, that has cell phone service, they'll be receiving those updates as well while they travel. So it kind of hits more of a wider swath.
I was also fully signed up for Code Red, never heard, never gotten any sort of notification.
It's specific to an area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not countywide. I have worked with the sheriff and we are going to be doing a countywide test of it just, just so everybody knows whether or not they're actually signed up correctly and going to receive, like I said, that information that you're loading in from those 911 databases, it has got to be very, very specific and that's why I went away from that. I went to more of a program of, we're asking people to, to let me know, to register, to re-register, make sure all of your stuff is in there correctly. But the same thing that you mentioned for the evacuation...
Excuse me, Sheriff, this is turning into a conversation. Would you like to move on?
I would.
Or pull it back from the public?
Right, if you have questions on Code Red, certainly meet with them offline and they can answer some specific questions for you. And there, it's an ongoing process to really make sure it's catching everybody, so. All right, any other questions for the public?
No? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. I think we need an approval on this so we can certainly get those proclamations. 60 days?
Public health directions will be 30, but general will be 60.
And there were some state changes made with legislation that CAO had regarding our changes that...
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve revised Trinity County Emergency Operations Plan so you can get it up on the website in a couple seconds.
All right. Who has the second?
You can have it.
We broke shampoo. All right, do I have a motion and a second and a further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you both very much. Okay, our last item before closed session, item 3.4, approve a budget adjustment for jail department 2300, increasing fixed assets by $65,000, approve a budget adjustment for the contingency general fund department, Department 9901, decreasing appropriation for contingency by $65,000, increase in general fund appropriations of $65,000. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Ms. Saxon, Sheriff. When I assumed office in November, I went to each division in the sheriff's office and I asked them what types of tools that they needed and what dangerous situations they happened to run into. And the biggest item I got from our correctional staff was a vehicle to safely transport hostages in and outside of the county to picking up from prisons, taking prisoners, and also taking out to mental health facilities for treatment and reevaluations. They told me that shortly before I came into office, they were transporting a couple of inmates and the vehicle caught on fire. They were lucky enough to pull over, get the inmates out, and the correctional officers were safe. In the meantime, what they've been able to do is use older vehicles to transport or patrol vehicles, marked patrol vehicles. And that sometimes we have issues if we have to take a patrol vehicle off, off the line and we don't have a deputy that can go out in the car. I began talking with CAO Coons about this and the safety back during the liability issue and we came up with a plan for a new transport vehicle that would be safer and give us more flexibility with regard to the safety of the inmates and the correctional staff when transporting. CAO Coons suggested we wait until mid-year so we knew where we stood on the budget before he could commit to providing funding for this. At that point, I'd like to turn it over to CAO Coons.
Thank you, Sheriff. Because during the budget process, remember two of you sat on the, on the budget ad hoc and we did anticipate that there was going to be a need for, for a vehicle, we just didn't know what type of vehicle. So we, we put some money into contingency knowing there would be a change of administration, the sheriff's department allowing the sheriff coming in to make that determination. So the funding wasn't anticipated, we just didn't know what the actual vehicle would be, so that's the funding we'd be using for this. Sheriff Saxon has now identified the type of vehicle if he's required.
All right. All numbers, questions? Any questions from the public on this item? Nope, all right. Bringing it back to the board.
Motion to approve 3.14 as presented and get that burned vehicle on the road.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you. All right, moving into closed session. Item 4.1, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Labor Counsel existing litigation. Number of cases, one, Trinity Action Association versus County of Trinity. Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 19CV001. Item 4.2, Government Code Section 54954.5D, Conference with Labor Counsel pending litigation. Number of cases, one, National Prescription Opia Litigation 1.18-op-450901. Item number 4.3, Government Code Section 54954.5, Conference with Labor Negotiators, County Designated Representatives David Prentice, Sophia Meyer, Shelley Nelson, Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff Association, Probation, Peace Officers, Unit Skilled Trades Unit, Management, Confidential Unit, and General Unit. Item 4.4, Government Code Section 54956.95, Liability Claim. Is it Ennis? Am I pronouncing it correctly? Number of cases, one, Claimant Jared Ennis, Claim Number TIBR-550505, Agency Claimed Against County of Trinity. Item 4.5, Continued from March 8, Government Code Section 54954.5, Public Employee Evaluation County Administrative Officer. With those items, anyone wishing to comment on closed session items?
Once again, John R. from Junction City. I'd like to speak to 4.1 and 4.5. If you don't mind, I'll start with 4.5. It's a continuation of employee evaluation of our county administrative officer. I think he's been doing a great job. You know, we went several years without a CAO and he showed up to a pretty messy situation and he's doing a great job of helping to administer this, all of this crazy stuff in our county. And I commend his efforts. He's engaged with the public and the feedback we've gotten from county employees is that he's fair and even-handed and he's doing a great job, so. On to 4.1. The litigant in this case, Trinity Action Association, has said since the beginning that they'll be appealing this case. They disqualified the judge that already ruled on, on the meat and potatoes of the case and offered a very strong ruling from the court that affirms the statutory exemption that the rest of the state is operating under. So now they've disqualified that judge and, and will be appealing even whatever this next judge comes up with. So I think it's crystal clear that this fringe group of extremists have no interest in protecting our environment as they claim. I think any interruption into the permitting process is an environmental disaster. Everybody involved will tell you that. Fish and wildlife, water board, county inspectors, this is obvious. So to prevent this environmental disaster that result from any interruption in the permitting process, I, I encourage you to continue vigorous defense on this matter and keep trying to do what is right for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing that, we will take a three-minute break before we move in. Yes. Okay, board met in closed session and for items 4.1, 4.3, and 4.4, direction was given to staff. Item 4.2, the board authorized to add additional defendants and allegations to, to litigation case. And 4.5, nothing to report or direction given yet. Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Is there a better way? There you go. Thank you.